Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 7th open meeting of the Select Board. I would like to call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM and invite you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start with public comment. Is there anyone here to make a public comment tonight? Okay, not hearing any of that, so we'll move on to our first public hearing of the night. Yes, our first public hearing relates to the open public hearing to receive comments regarding the classification and taxation of property according to use. So I would like to move along with our presentation. You're already ready.
Okay.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I would take a motion to open the public hearing.
I'm going to open a public hearing in accordance with general laws, Chapter 40, Section 56 is amended to determine the percentage of local tax levy which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 2023 tax rate.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a motion in a second. We are in public hearing.
Fantastic. Sounds complicated, doesn't it?
We need to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry. Now we are.
Okay. So I did change up the presentation a little bit this year, just to try to simplify it a little bit more. But as always, I want to go through the steps on what it took to get us here tonight. And this slide just kind of represents those steps. The first thing we have to do is determine the actual property tax levy that we're going to raise for the budget process. And we've done that, $91,727,636. And then we determine the assessed valuations for all the properties in the town each year. And that comes out to just over the new Powerball jackpot of $7 billion, $7 billion, $21,739,000. So it gives you an idea of how much you can buy when you win that jackpot this year. Then we tabulate the assessed valuations by class. So we make sure that all the properties either are class residentially, commercial, personal property, industrial, and so forth. Once we do that, we obtain valuation certification from the Department of Revenue. We did that this year on October 27th. That's what my office is responsible for. And then we also receive the certification of new growth. And that is all the new taxable property that wasn't on the rolls last year. And so they must approve that as well. And that was done on the same day, on October 27th. And then we present the classification options to you people, so you can vote on how we might shift that burden. And that's why we're here tonight. Then we'll review and discuss those tax shift options tonight with you, and then we'll vote on that. And then we sign the LA 5 and get that approved by the Department of Local Services. Lynn and I will finish up the recap, submit that, and get the tax rate approved, so we can send out the bills by January 1st. So one thing I want to explain is just the simple math behind the tax rate. We talked about determining the levy that we raise for property taxes. That is the $91 million that we talked about earlier. And then you divide that by the total value of the town, and that is your single tax rate. So, you know, it's a misunderstanding a lot of times that when we go out and inspect properties that we're trying to raise people's taxes. And really, all we're doing is determining your piece of the pie that you will pay into the budget. And so we'll get into that in a second. But, simple math, if we did that math today and we had a single tax rate, it'd be $13.06 tonight. But let's look at how some valuation changes affect your taxes. And so I came up with this scenario, a two-property town, for instance. And in this case, we have a house worth $100,000, and we have a store worth $150,000. And let's say, for argument's sake, that the, to run this two-property town, it takes $2,500. And so what does that mean? So we take the $2,500 that it takes the town, the total levy, we divide it by the total value of $250,000, you're going to get .01, or $10 per thousand. So that's simple math. And so what does that mean? The house is going to pay $1,000 towards the taxes, and the store is going to pay $1,500. So what happens if we, the valuations increase, but the budget stays the same? So in other words, the house increased by $20,000, so now it's worth $120,000 this year. And the store is worth $180,000 instead of $150,000. So that means the levy stays the same at $2,500. Well, what happens to the tax rate? So we take the new, the levy, $2,500, and we divide that by $300,000 this time, and it comes out to .008333, or $8.33 per thousand. Thus, the house is still going to pay $1,000 in taxes, and the store is still going to pay $1,500. The reason for that is the valuation has changed, but the budget remained the same. So all it does is change the tax rate, or how you're going to raise those taxes. But let's say we're going to raise the budget by $500 this time, but the valuation stays the same. So this time, we're raising the budget, but values are staying the same. And in this case, we take the same thing, the $3,000 levy, we divide it by the $250,000 in value, and you should come up with .012, or $12 per thousand. And this time, because the levy increased, your house is now going to pay $1,200 instead of $1,000, and your store is going to pay $1,800 instead of $1,500. And that's to make up that gap in the budget. And then, one of the other ways is, let's say, you know, when people ask me this all the time, what, you know, if commercial values increase and residential stays the same. Well, here's the, here's the scenario. If your house stayed valued at $100,000, and the store went from $150,000 to $200,000, and the levy stayed the same, $2,500, what's going to happen in that case is, you're going to take the $300,000 of value and divide it into the $2,500 of levy, and this time you'll get .08333, or $8.33 per thousand. But that means the house is going to pay $833, a difference of $167. Well, that $167 gets shifted on to the increase in commercial, and that's $1,666. So those are just a couple examples I like to go over. So it's understandable that we're not out there trying to raise taxes on each individual property. It's just the difference in valuation or your budget and how that can affect your taxes. So let's get back to North Andover for a minute. And the first thing we have to do in this process is, we have to determine the total limit, or taxes that we can raise this year. How does that begin? So when you look at the levy limit, we start with last year's levy limit of $83 million, and we add 2.5% to that. That's the allowable increase over last year's levy. Doesn't mean that I'm raising 2.5% above your individual tax bill last year. It means that we're allowed to add 2.5% over last year's total levy. And then we add new growth to that. And the big change this year is the $6,798,000 growth that we've talked about all year due to the Amazon project. Why is that so important? It's because it changes the base of the following year. That's our starting number for next year. And just to give you an idea of how big that number is, over the last five years, the average, I looked back, it was about $1,036,000 was our typical growth figure, average over. And this is $6,798,000. That's a lot of added value to the town that we don't usually see. In result, what happens is, it brings our levy up to $92,135,718. We're allowed to add debt exclusions to that, because that's a temporary increase in our budget due to a borrowing for a specific project. So any debt exclusions come back off the books after they're paid for. And so that's the reason why you're allowed to add debt exclusions to your levy, and that comes out to a levy limit of $92,425,142. The actual levy this year, we talked about, is $91,727,636. I'll talk about that in a second. But let's talk about one, two other terms, real quick. One, we talked about the levy limit, but let's talk about the levy ceiling for a second. The levy ceiling is the maximum amount the town can raise at any time, forever. So you take the total valuation of the town, and you times it by 2.5%, that gives you this $175 million. And that's also part of Proposition 2.5. You can raise 2.5% over last year, but a maximum of 2.5% of your total value of your property. And so you can see that we're raising $92 million, but we can never raise more than $175 million. So that's what that ceiling means. And, or it means that you take the total valuation of the town times $25 per thousand if we had a single rate, and that comes out to the same number. Okay? So there's two ways to get there. So that's levy ceiling versus levy limit. And then one other term we talk about is excess levy capacity. And that's the difference between what we're raising and then what we're allowed to raise each year. So in this particular case, we do have some excess levy capacity this year, because we've seen such a large amount of growth. We've raised a lot of money, capital expenditures, single-funded projects, this year to get our levy up to $91,727,000, and our excess levy capacity is almost $700,000. So that's not a bad thing. What that means is that we, it's like equine in your home. You know, your home, you can sell for much more than what you owe on it. Well, that's the same thing here. We're not raising taxes to our complete capacity, but also remember that that $92 million is our, is our base for next year's levy limit. So it's not like we lose it, it's just, we're putting it off. Right, exactly.
It was really difficult for us to exercise it. If you remember correctly, with the $6 million in new growth that we did see, we wanted to be a little bit conservative. So we anticipated we would have excess levy capacity, but it is more than we've had in the last couple of years.
And then so when we look at a couple of different ways of shifting the burden, you can see here with the pie chart, straight across the board, if everybody was to pay their fair share, or 100% of their valuation, the residential class would raise about $71 million of that total property taxes. And then the commercial, industrial, and personal property would raise the rest. And you can see that in the little table next to the pie chart. And that's at a single rate. Now if we go and we look at the opposing, if we go to a max shift, that means we're changing the shift from the residential onto commercial, as much as we can, which is 50%. The commercial will pay 50% more than what they would. Then that would take the residential class from paying $71 million down to $68 million. And so you can see that on those two pie charts, if you compare them. And then some of the fluctuations on the commercial and industrial as well. And the resulting tax rates. So on this one, the, the single rate would be 13.06, but if we go to a max shift, then the residential rate would be 11.78, and the CIP rate would be 19.60. And so this here is the table of shifts. And you can see across the top, the 1% here, that means that's where a single tax rate, everybody pays their fair share, or 100% of their valuation. That's not the way the town is set up right now. We are at a 1.32 CIP shift, so I'm going to get to that in a second. But if you look at the column all the way to your left, you can see what we're doing with the commercial, industrial, and personal property shift, is they're paying 1%, 2%, up to 10% more. And then you can see on the resulting, the residential factor, theirs is going down to 98% of their share. And then the resulting tax rates are all the way over on the two right-hand columns. So as we go through these, you can see how the increase in CIP does have a minor decrease in residential. The reason for that is, we have to remember, we're 83% residential community. So we have to shift a great deal in order to see, the residential to see the savings on that. And so if we go all the way to the, to the end, you'll see that there's the 50% shift, and then the residential is saving about 6%, or 8%, I'm sorry. Because they usually pay 83%, and now they're paying 75%. So you can see, that's a 50% increase on CIP, but only an 8% decrease on residential. So just to give you an idea. So this is, this table here, with the highlighted yellow, is typically where we've been historically in the past. And right now, we're at a 1.32 CIP shift, which means that the residential factor is .9371, means that they're paying about 78% of the share this year. Now, what's happening this year is, because Amazon is coming on in value, it's greatly decreasing everybody's burden across the board. And I'll get to that in a second. But you can see the resulting tax rates. Currently, the tax rate is $13.53 per thousand for residential, and $18.73 for commercial and industrial. So if we stay with a 1.32 CIP shift that you see here, one up from the bottom, in the yellow highlighted area, it means that the residential class, instead of raising 83.29% that you see on the bottom of the page, that is what they raise currently of the total levy, they're only going to be raising 78.33%. The reason for that is because we get an addition of a $368 million property on the CIP side. So that's shifting a lot of the burden from the residential class onto commercial, industrial, and personal property. And then you can see that the CIP is going from 16.71%, they're now going to pay 21%. And that's again, because we're adding Amazon to that table. So you can see how the burden shifts, and it's the reason why I wanted to show that to property town, that when, when we have a huge increase in valuation in one part, it really shifts the burden away from the others. So that's what you're seeing here this year. These are just some of the valuations over the, this year. What the average single-family value in North Andover now is $692,000. Last year, it was, I believe, $607,000. So you can, you can see, we had a drastic increase in market value. We're going to see that again next year, because we're always one year behind the market. And so we're seeing a great increase in single-family valuation. The commercial went from $689,000 to $791,000. And then the average industrial went from 2.4 to 2.628. And what I had to do there is exclude Amazon, because it would have skewed that average valuation in the industrial sector, because again, $338 million, it just throws your average way off. But just to give you an idea, because of that valuation, Amazon's bill would be about $5,845,000, just on that single property. And then here, we have the historical tax rates. I show this just to give people an idea of where we've been, where we are. But it's hard to determine anything from this table, because these, these tax rates could have resulted in a shift in our budget, could have resulted in a shift in the way we split the rate, or in the valuations themselves. So there's not a whole lot to glean off of this. This, I want to just warn you, I realized this mistake tonight before I came up, that your chart in your book is going to look a little bit different. As you know, when you're doing Excel spreadsheets and you're creating charts, really what's happening here is, on yours, it probably shows that the 2023 is 83.5%, but realistically, it was just grabbing from the wrong table. So it's, it's showing the residential share going from 83% last year down to that 78% like we talked about. And you can see what a sharp decline that is. And then on the CIP, it's going to a 1.32. So, again, it's, it's a drastic difference of how, how it shifts the burden. And so on this table as well, the, the top two columns, it changed under that 1.32 and 1.33. I just wanted to bring your attention to that. It actually shows that if we go with a 1.32% shift like we were at last year, residential will still see $262 increase in the average single-family tax bill. The commercial will see a $755 increase. And the average industrial will see a decrease, but again, that's reflective of Amazon coming onboard. In order to see a large change in that, you would have to go to almost a maximum shift to see an increase in the industrial.
I don't think we have the same chart here.
You don't. That's what I'm saying, yeah. This is, this is 1.32. You'll see a negative 44, I think, in your table.
Negative 55.
Yeah, so that's, that's incorrect. It is actually a $262 increase. So I apologize for that. And then the same thing with 133. I think there was a, I'm not sure what the value was, but it's a $248 increase, so. But everything else is correct. And so you can see, before we actually see an increase in the current residential or current industrial valuation, we'd have to shift all the way up to 1.4 before you'd start to see an increase in that average industrial bill. And again, the reason for that is that Amazon addition.
I guess I'm still, every time I think I understand this.
That's okay.
So if I'm looking at your chart for potential shifts, right, and I'm looking at, I don't even know pages, pages, I don't remember, but I'm looking at potential shifts, and I'm in the 1.32 range.
Page 20.
Page 20, thank you. I'm seeing a residential tax rate of 1224, and a commercial tax rate of 1724, right?
Yep.
Which is less than what we paid last year for a thousand. So if we were to stay the cost on 1.32, I'd wonder, why is the tax, why is the average home going to go up and not down?
Because the increase in the budget does not offset the decrease in the tax rate. That's what you're, that's what you're seeing.
It's a scale, right?
I see.
Yeah.
Yes, I can't hear you.
With your mic.
Okay, maybe. Oh, sorry. Sorry about that.
So the increase is because the valuations continue to rise?
That's right. Yeah, the valuations rise, but that should decrease the tax rate. But again, because we're seeing such a large increase in our budget, you know, we're looking at $91 million over last year, the increase in the budget over the valuation increase is just not enough to offset. So although you see a reduction in the tax rate, you're still seeing a nominal increase in the tax bill. And again, it's because 83% of our community is residential homes. So no matter how we do that, I think you're always going to see a small increase in taxes. It would take a large, unique situation in order to see the taxes go down, unfortunately.
And how do we determine the actual levy? The 91 versus the 92? The levy, I understand the levy limit, and the levy...
It's the budget.
It's the budget.
Yeah.
And that's what you...
So it's what we're raising in taxes in order to run the town, offset by state aid.
And that's what you come, yeah.
That's what we brought forward at town meeting.
Right.
On the recap.
Yeah, and that's hard to determine until we finally get those figures for state aid finalized. It's always a, it's always a moving target for us, so we don't, we get so close to this hearing before we actually know what that's going to be. That's what's the tough part about it.
Right. And when we go to town meeting with the budget, we're basing it on increases with contracts and...
Right, and you've got to estimate your receipts for next year, you've got to estimate motor vehicle excise. So there's so many moving parts to this, it's, it's very hard to determine until we almost get to tonight's hearing, unfortunately.
And that's where the gap comes in.
Right, exactly. And we can't all of a sudden say, well, let's hurry up and spend $697,000 somewhere.
We'd have to have another town meeting to authorize it.
Right. And we don't want to be over it.
No, you can't do that.
That would be bad, too.
I don't know if they'd be happy with us if we did that.
Under is good.
Yep. So this is just a, the way the vote would go, in case you needed some wording. But I wanted to discuss, by Melissa's request, I think it was smart, we, we talked about the residential exemption last year. We didn't really want to get into it, because it is a little bit tough to understand, but I wanted to go over it tonight very shortly, just to show you where North Andover would fit, in case we wanted to entertain that. I'm going to go over it, but I wouldn't recommend it, and I'll show you why. So residential exemption, what this does is, it grants up to a 35% valuation discount to owner-occupied residential properties. So the only test is you have to, this home has to be your domicile, has to mean your main residence. And so we can grant up to a 35% valuation. Again, it's a valuation discount. So what that means is, it's a, a decrease in value. The exclusions to this exemption would be vacant land, because obviously vacant land cannot be your domicile. Seasonal homes, so if you had a second home, those would not be available to the residential exemption, has to be your primary home or occupancy. And then residential property is not occupied as primary residence in order, although those apartment complexes, things like that, those can't be primary residences either. So with that being said, what it does is, it shifts the burden. Now, this is just within the residential class, it does not affect the CIP. It just shifts the burden from sometimes low, less expensive properties onto higher properties, or it's for towns that have a lot of summer occupants. So some of the Cape Towns, places like that, where you have a large, or absentee landlords, basically. It's going to shift the burden onto them. And there are 16 communities right now in Massachusetts that do entertain this residential exemption. Most of them are out at the Cape. It's Truro, Watertown, Provincetown, Barnstable, Oak Bluffs, Tisbury, or some of the richer communities like Brookline. However, Everett did do this at one point, didn't they, Melissa? Yep. So there can be a lot of reasons behind it, but let's take a look and see how this is figured out. So the first thing you have to do in step, to figure out the residential exemption, step one is, you've got to determine the average value of a residential parcel. That's all residential parcels. That's vacant land, anything classed under that code beginning with 1. Should be vacant land, apartment complexes, anything like that. So you take the total residential value, we divide it by the number of residential parcels, which is 9,440. The average value of residential parcel comes out to 621,718. So let's, for argument's sake, the Select Board decides to give a 20% residential exemption. What that means is, we would reduce anybody who qualifies their value by 124,344. So that's step two. So then what we do, in order to make up for this, is you take that total residential value, times it by the number of parcels, and that's going to be the average, I'm sorry, here we go. Take the average number of, take the total number of residential parcels, and times it by the number that would be qualified. And so, right now, there's about 73% of the homes in North Andover would qualify for this exemption. And so we'd get 6,920 residents that would qualify, and what does that mean? $860 million of exemption value is what we'd be giving out. So how do we do that? Step five would be that we take the total value that we're exempting and subtract it from the residential value that we had before this exemption, and that's the adjusted class value. And when, and what we do there is, we take the residential levy, let's say we stick with the 1.32%, we talked about, the residential levy would be 79,407,761, and then you divide that by the adjusted class, because we're giving so much exemption off, the new residential tax rate would be 1585. So it is a, it is a difference in the tax rate, is the, is how we grant this exemption versus just money out of an overlay. It's just shifting the burden in the class. And so here's, here's the resulting table. What does it mean? Any home that is less than $545,500 in value would see a decrease in their taxes. So something that's valued at $200,000 in North Andover would see a $1,249 discount in their taxes. But anybody over $545,500, even though they qualify for the exemption, would see an increase. Because again, the 124... Because again, the $124,000 off the value is not enough to offset the increase in the tax rate. And I did a little research just to give you an idea. There are 1,815 homes that would be valued less than 545, and then there are 4,526 homes that are valued over that break-even point. So that's why this really doesn't make a whole lot of sense to us. You know, you can take a lot of burden off those smaller homes, but you're only talking about 1,800 homes versus 4,500 seeing an increase. And then this other table is just showing the difference in taxes if you didn't qualify for that exemption. Is there any questions?
That's a new one.
It is a new one.
I don't think we've heard about that one before, but we really didn't have a need.
Right, right, and not a lot of towns entertain this, and you can see why. You know, it really does make sense to a town like Tisberry or out the Cape, where you have a lot of owners that just never reside in the town.
Sure.
You know, and so they're always renting out their properties, and you're seeing a lot of influx, and all the burden on the town is from the renters and not the owners, so it does make them, it does make sense that way.
More onto the seasonal, the folks who own seasonal homes.
Exactly, yeah.
You find out a lot at waterfront properties that
Yeah.
They carry the burden.
Yes, they do. Yeah. So that's where we're at, I don't know if you have any questions on the shift or anything else, but this is just historically, we haven't entertained the residential exemption, the small commercial exemption, or the open space exemption. And I wouldn't suggest we do at this point. And also, if you have any questions, my sole Board of Assessor, Chris Caldwell, is here tonight. He's the only one that could make it. Unfortunately, Brian and Nicole couldn't be here, Brian is a finance director in Wilmington, unfortunately he has a rough time this time of year as well. And so Nicole had a different obligation as well, so. But happy to answer any questions, or?
So the exemption would have to be accepted at town meeting, right?
No, you can accept it here tonight, right now. And then the assessor's office would be inundated with 9,620 applications. But happy to do whatever you guys want.
I guess my only question is, we have this large, we keep talking about the large amount of new growth with Amazon. How we do?
Sorry.
So the tax shift that we decide tonight, we just want to be cognizant, how that's going to affect next year, right?
Right, so we will, you know, our recommendation is to stay the course, because while we have the large amount of new value, right, we know the TIF is going to kick in, and so we know that we're not always going to have that.
Right.
So we think if you stay the course, it will be more stable for taxpayers.
Right, we're adding $338 million of value, and then next year it's coming right back off.
Yep.
So that's why we met all year long and were very cognizant to really take that growth money and use it for one-time expenses the best we could. So you're not going to see a large
Yes.
you know, impact on those residential taxpayers.
And now we can be really strategic about how we use that money through Facilities Master Plan 2, and this gives us that opportunity to do that, but our recommendation would be to stay the course at this point, follow the plan.
Yep.
This is a public hearing, so is there anyone who would like to comment? Anybody else have comments to add?
Oh, thank you, just, thank you, Bill, for all the work.
Sure.
Very good presentation, as usual, very informative.
Yeah, thank you, Bill, I really appreciate it. You change it a little bit every year. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, my pleasure.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I will take a motion to move out of public hearing.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion, I'll take a second.
A second?
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are out of one public hearing.
Shift just so Bill and Lynn can go home.
Thank you. So we will move ahead. So we're going to take it to item A of new business, where we will vote on the percentage of local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 23 tax rate.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the Board of Select would adopt a residential factor of .9371 for the purpose of classifying the FY 2023 North Andover property taxes.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we are moving back to our second public hearing of the night regarding an application for storage of flammable and combustible liquids, solids, and gases at 4-100 compass points, so I will take a motion to move into public hearing.
Madam Chair, I'll move to open the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 148, Section 13, for the application for storage of flammable and combustible liquids, solids, and gases 4-100 compass point.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we are in our next public hearing.
Madam Chair, this is a story we've heard before.
Yes.
Where fire prevention has been doing their due diligence and came upon some propane that had not been correctly applied for in the past, this application will bring them up to compliance.
Okay.
So how does that happen, how would they apply for in the past? Is it something that they just didn't bother to apply for, and then the fire department comes upon it?
Yes, basically.
Is there any penalty for that? It seems like that's something they should be upon, know that they would need to apply for.
Yeah, so they were not appropriately permitted, I don't know if there's any way to really know when, because there's not paperwork about it, it was so long ago. But we're doing our due diligence and doing inspections of all properties now, and they're finding them, and so when they're finding them, we're basically having them go through the permitting process so that they can be inspected, and we can make certain that they are all in compliance and safe.
Sure.
But it's hard to know even when they were installed, or the process that they did at that point, but we know that they were not registered correctly, so.
We're glad they've discovered it now, and it makes you question how many more are out there that are not being inspected and not permitted.
So now, all of those, as these come to us, they'll be routinely inspected from here on up.
Yes, they go through the regular process now.
That's great.
Some things they just slip through the cracks, but this one has some, you know, potentially serious implications.
Underground storage is a big deal, especially, so.
It's almost like when they come to say yes for moving to town, we've got to just give them a punch list and say, you've been informed, now you're responsible, you must complete this punch list.
Yeah, they get the book that we created for them?
Yeah, I know, it's just.
I don't know what happened before, though, like, I don't know, this could have been 40 years ago, right? Yeah, so, but now they do get a book, if you remember, Andrew Shapiro right before us, and they get a book and there's little checkmarks and everything they need to do, so I think the process now is much easier than it used to be, it's all online too, so you don't have to come in and do it, but at the time, I think it was.
I think it's probably, and there may not have been as many rules and regulations about what you had to, you know, get approved, but things changed and we're tracking them well now, and.
We have two fire prevention officers now, so I think that also goes a long way in making sure that they're doing all their inspections and getting all their work done.
Definitely.
No, I'm sure they're doing a good, a great job with that, it was just, it's just, it just seems to be, not necessarily just for this, but for other things where the permitting just slips through the cracks, and I don't know how many times can you tell people, and they just, they're so excited about their new opportunity or whatever.
I mean, there's quite a few that they've found now, this must be at least the third or fourth.
Absolutely.
Is there any movement to get these out of the ground?
I don't know of any movement to get these ones out of the ground, I know that some of the other ones that we have found, they have, in fact, upon inspection, decided to change them, and this one, I have not heard that there's any appetite to move them.
Is that the recommended course now, to have them above, or does it not?
So as long as they're doing the leak testing and everything, and they have the appropriate leak detection?
It's fine.
It's fine, yeah.
Any other comments? Again, it's a public hearing, so if anyone has anything to add, we'll be happy to hear it. But not hearing anything else, I will take a motion to exit public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move to close the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 148, Section 13, for the application of storage of flammable and combustible liquid solids and gases at 4-100 compass point.
I have a motion, I'll take a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are out of public hearing. So now we will move on to item B, which is to vote on the application for storage of flammable and combustible liquid solids and gases at 4-100 compass point. I will take a motion.
I will move with the Select Board to approve the application for storage of flammable and combustible liquid solids and gases at 4-100 compass point.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, can I request we take item F and D out of order, so that the guidance director can be heard?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move ahead to item F, the application from the Patriotic Observance Committee to close Main Street from First and Main to Green Street for the Veterans' Day Parade on November 11th, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and we will hear from Mr. LeBlanc.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board, just asking if you're blessed to conduct our ceremony on Friday, starting at 10:15. We don't actually need the street for two hours, I think the ceremony wraps up probably around 11:20, and we'll be down at Patriots Park at that point, so.
Better safe than sorry, so that's.
And they brought programs.
Oh, thank you. Okay, does anyone have any question? Thank you, Joe, for your continued hard work. I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move approval, with the caveat, you don't need our blessing, but we're blessed to have you guys.
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I'll second both of those comments.
Well said, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
And I have a second copy of the proclamation, if you want to just have it for your, give it up.
Yes, let's see. So we can actually, Rosemary, do you want to read it? We'll talk about the proclamation next. Item G is the Veterans' Day proclamation, so each year we are lucky enough to be able to support this proclamation for Veterans' Day, for our local veterans, and it's my pleasure and honor to present it to you guys, and we will also be doing the same thing at the ceremony, right? So do you want to read it, or?
No, no, you're the chair. But thank you for the offer.
So I'll go ahead and read it. I'll actually come over to you, Joe. Proclamation, Town of North Andover, Massachusetts, Veterans' Day, November 11th, 2022. Whereas we are called by the nation on this Veterans' Day to honor all veterans, men and women who voluntarily risk their lives in service to our country, and whereas, on Veterans' Day, we wish to acknowledge their courage, their personal character, and the code of service held in the principles of duty, honor, country, and whereas the Town of North Andover wishes to acknowledge all veterans who have kept their promise to uphold these principles during both their time of service and later in our communities, and whereas we citizens can draw on their examples of courage, fidelity, and hope whenever we may falter. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of North Andover, do hereby dedicate this day, November 11th, 2022, as a day of remembrance and recognition for all veterans, and further, we ask all citizens to pause on this day to remember the unfailing and often unseen service of veterans to all of us. In witness thereof, we have set our hands and affixed to this document the seal of the Town of North Andover on this 11th day of November, 2022, signed by me as the Chair of the Select Board, so it is my honor. Thank you. We all support all of your daily efforts.
I tell people all the time, I work for the best towns around.
We're really lucky to have you, so.
It looks okay Friday morning, or maybe a little bit later in the afternoon, it might be not so good, but I think we're going to be good.
We're going to get through?
For the parade and the ceremony, we should be really good.
What's the temperature, because that's usually the first day I pull out my winter coat.
It's going to be in the high, high 50s, low 60s.
That's pretty nice, that's pretty nice.
Praying the rain holds off.
You don't need a winter coat.
Honestly, it's like clockwork most years, that that's, the winter coat comes out.
It's going to be a little bit rainy, a little bit rainy in the afternoon, but it's supposed to come off.
Last year, we had all four seasons.
During the time of the ceremony, yeah.
Yes, yeah, see?
Yeah, you never know. So, well, thank you, Joe, thanks for coming tonight, we always love to see you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Appreciate.
Joe, before you leave, would it be all right if you talked a little bit about the Vietnam Veterans Memorial that is?
Can we make this motion and?
Oh, of course, I'm sorry.
And then, and then, don't go anywhere. So I will take a motion.
Okay, for the, which one, I'm sorry.
It's item G.
Item G.
I will get the Select Board to approve the Veterans' Day proclamation.
I have a motion, I'll take a second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, it's official.
So the intent is to add every veteran's name who served in Vietnam from North Andover. We got the names from the bonus division, I would have to conduct outreach to make sure it's 100% accurate, but we're looking at 551 names.
That's amazing.
So I'm meeting with Mr. Rand next week, and we'll start kind of hashing out how we're going to go about it, need to talk to Andrew and Melissa, of course, as well.
Mr. Rand's been working on that project for a very long time.
It's great to see it come back to fruition.
Yeah, you know, the original, and now that adding all of these more needs.
Yeah, so we got the Shrob Grant four years ago, and that was the first refurbishment, but this will be the completion of that memorial.
Is that a clue that you just flew over Vietnam during the war?
That's what we need to kind of talk about, like, how are we going to, I mean, my feeling is if you served, you served, but you need to take a look at a lot of different scenarios.
I'll send you an article.
Yeah, it's on the preliminaries. Sorry, I don't have a lot to report on that right now, Rosemary.
That's okay, but it's just that it, it was timely, it was timely, and I just thought, anytime we can mention those dear veterans from any war, but in this particular case, the Vietnam War, which was a pretty tough war.
Yeah.
Pretty tough to come home to, so.
Yeah, and the population was, I think, 12,000 during that time, I'm talking 551
That's a lot.
people who served, so that's a significant number.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the indulgence.
Moving to item C, this is a vote to allow the town manager to enter into energy contracts in excess of three years, so I'm going to turn it over to you to enlighten us.
So as you know, for both our gas and electric, we actually belong to a cooperative of communities who go out for our rates together in order to get the best possible rates. Our last time we went out to bid was in 2019, and what they're basically saying is that our best bet would be to lock in now for 2024, and they're recommending a 48-month schedule, their contract. So the way that it works is that they actually go out to bid, we get all the pricing in, and we usually have, depending on how the pricing comes in, anywhere between two hours and 24 hours to make a decision. And all of the communities basically have to say yes in order to do that. It's one of the more interesting things that we bid on. So our current rate for constellation is .09940 per kilowatt hour, so that's electricity, and the rate that they think will be at will be 0.1399, so still fairly low, and that rate would not go into effect until May of 2024. So what they're basically have said is that the estimated annual savings, if we continue through that process, would be about 62% for communities. And then for the gas, which we currently use direct energy through 2024, that would actually, will actually go into effect into November, they're also suggesting a 24-month. Our current rate is 7.14, and they are recommending it will be 12.430, so an increase, but still not the increase that we're seeing in the regular market. And the current rate for gas is 1380, so it's a good rate, and the reason we get that is because we do it basically as a co-op. So this will be coming up, I think the end of this month is what they told us, right? And we won't get a lot of notice when they're coming in, so we just wanted to get permission to enter into a four-year contract ahead of time, so that we can go ahead and do that. As you know, we passed town meeting articles that allow us to enter into contracts of more than three years, but the way that our motion is written is that any contract over three years requires the support of the Select Board.
And just to clarify, if, this is only for municipal buildings, right?
Yes.
And also, does that include schools?
Yes, all of our buildings, not residential or commercial or anything else, just. Yes. All of our buildings, not residential or commercial or anything else, just, it's just a contract for the town.
Does anyone else have questions? Okay. I will take, go ahead, go ahead.
So these, this is the rate for our?
Just, just for municipal buildings.
Okay.
Yeah, different than the aggregate program that.
Just to, yeah, this is different from the residential. Yeah, I just wanna be clear.
That was my, that was why, just in case someone's watching.
There's tons of people watching.
Figured that out. Now I gotta do it again. I'm like, don't, don't get it. Totally different.
I thought I was. So, yes. So with not hearing other comments, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the select board authorize the town manager, town manager Rodriguez, sorry, to enter into energy contracts for gas and electrical in excess of three years.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Item D is to vote to change the updates from the Master Plan Implementation Committee from quarterly to semi-annually, so.
Liaison, I will just say that, you know, I think the feeling is that there's really not that much information to update quarterly on, so they would prefer doing it semi-annually. That way, they have more substance every time they come for us. So, I mean, most committees, we usually have them come in annually, right? So they were doing quarterly, and I think it's really just to give them a little more substance, a little more time to get things worked through.
Well, and if something important comes up, they could just.
Of course.
Ask a couple for us. So, yeah, that's a good idea. Because it's work, just putting it together, and then if you don't have a lot of substance, it's kind of.
So, Madam Chair, I'll move the select board approve the request of the Master Plan Implementation Committee to change updates to the select board from quarterly to semi-annually.
Okay, I have a motion. Can I have a second? A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Moving on to item E, our appointment subcommittee has been working diligently, and we have received multiple recommendations for people to form the school building committee. As a board, we also still need to choose a member, so I think maybe we should do that, to have that discussion first, and then we'll just nominate everybody at once, so.
I mean, I would throw you out there because you have most recently had children in the middle school. I have one now, but. I have one, but we're not as familiar with the middle school as you have been.
I would be, I would be happy to do it. I would love to serve.
I'm all for that.
Okay. Yeah, I would be happy to. It's like a whole different perspective, and I'm excited about that possibility, so I'm willing. Okay.
And I will have to say that Dick and I interviewed five extremely qualified candidates for, to fill the middle school parent roles, as, and we had asked for engineering or construction or architectural experience, and they were all so well-qualified. And the two that we are appointing have experience with schools, one working on the addition at Phillips Academy. They're doing a gymnasium addition and another with the Billerica High School. So I think that they will, and they both have middle school children, so I think they'll both add a lot to the committee.
Fantastic.
There's a P in there, and that's a very important thing to have.
Yeah.
Senior project manager.
Yeah. Thank you.
They were both amazing. All five were incredible. We really have a lot of talent in this town. And, you know, if we could appoint all five, we would've, but that's not what we, that's not, wasn't our charter. So we chose two that we felt were extremely well-qualified for this, these positions, and I think they will provide a lot of insights. Both of them have experience working in schools and doing proper school projects, so I think they definitely will have a lot to offer.
I think, though, as you just said, I think we're really lucky. We have two school projects that we needed to field, two committees, and.
And aren't we lucky that we have so many qualified people? Because hopefully, there will be more school projects down the line. So, okay, I will take a motion.
Do you want me to list all of them?
If, yes, it's, yes. It's on there.
The select board appoint Jennifer Whitney, Jennifer Cornyn, Lori Berzlaugh, Steve Foster, Mike Grant, George Gonslavas, is that right? That was it. Joseph Hicks, David Mueller, and Janice Phillips to the Middle School Building Committee.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Awesome. Thank you all. Okay, we.
I know we have a lot of people who have applied for positions, and we haven't really had a chance to interview too many people. We've both kind of been dealing with illnesses the last couple of weeks, so we've had to suspend all of our interviews. So we will get back to that next week, but it has been a few weeks where we have not been able to interview any additional people. We don't wanna risk, you know, exposing anybody to anything, so.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. It's good for people to know that you're on the list. Okay, moving to item H, which is a vote to approve ARPA funding in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for the follow-up survey and outreach to the community. So, I can explain that.
Easy ones. If you remember correctly, we did a survey back when we started, right before we started spending any ARPA money. It was a survey for residents and for businesses. We are gonna be doing a second survey to see how people feel about the spending we've done so far, and also if the issues are still the same, or if there's new issues that have come up. The surveys are required, but under the ARPA legislation as well, we need to do this community outreach, and we feel like this is the best way to do that. And we're actually gonna be sending out twice as many postcards this time as we did last time, so more people will get the postcard at their house.
So the postcards will come in, it tells you which website to go to, to, okay. And there will be paper available if people come in and wanna fill it?
Yep. And then we also post it, we just post a link, and you can also just, if you don't get a postcard, you can go ahead and do it. Yep.
Okay.
How do you determine who gets the postcard?
So they actually do that, and I believe it was relatively random last time, yeah, so. But we asked them to do twice as many, just because the number we got back was actually not horrible, but we would like to encourage more people to do it, and we have more time in between our two surveys than we had before, so we wanted more people.
And just because you don't get a postcard doesn't mean you can't fill out the survey.
No, we absolutely encourage everyone.
Everybody can fill out the survey. That's great. Thank you. Okay, I will take a motion.
I'll move that the select board approve funding from ARPA in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for follow-up survey outreach to the community.
I have a motion and I will take a second. Yeah.
So can we eventually get like a list of everything that we have approved so far? I know we've.
Absolutely can.
It doesn't have to be tonight, or maybe in our next meeting, we can just review where we are so far with, because I think we're doing a fantastic job. I just wanna like to see it all laid out in front of us.
And I believe Andrew has almost finished a website, when you, if you.
Should've known.
He hasn't, I don't know if he shared it yet, although if you put it in our search, it does come up already. But we do have a website, and it does have the chart on there. It even has a handy-dandy little pie chart, so maybe next, next meeting, we can come in and just present that, so people can see it.
Perfect. I'll do that right now.
Sure, that's great. Thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Item I is the request of the festival committee to use the common for the annual tree lighting ceremony on November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, from four PM to seven PM. How exciting is this?
I don't know, it's giving me, I'm getting anxious.
Yeah, because it means the holidays are coming. So, any questions?
Hold it for time. I'll definitely move approval.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looking forward to it. Item J is the request of the festival committee to use Main, Elm, and Water Streets for the annual Santa Parade on November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, from twelve PM until two PM. Again, super excited to have these traditions back, and people are looking forward to it already. So I've seen a lot of questions floating around lately about these two events, so we'll be happy to firm it up.
It'll be an exciting weekend.
Mm-hmm.
Weekend after, Thanksgiving, right?
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say that for both of these causes, they're especially probably even for the parade, if anybody would be willing to make a donation that would go towards a band or something like that, they're always looking to fundraise for funds for these events, because it's all volunteers, and it's all, the money is raised outside for the Santa Parade, outside of the town's budget, put it that way, so.
And any organizations that wanna march, whether it's sports, or schools, or elementary schools, right?
No, they're very open to, to all of that. And they do a nice job. They really do a nice job. And especially even considering last year, it was so difficult because a lot of the bands weren't marching because of COVID and a whole bunch of other things. So just putting that out there, if somebody wants to help out a little bit, I'm sure the festival committee would welcome any donations or any volunteering. They work very hard. They, they work hard so that we all have a good time.
So we get to have fun, right?
They're working it, and we're having fun, so they deserve all the help and accolades.
Much appreciated.
Yeah, they work really hard, and so, just thought I would throw that out there.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Looking forward to both of those events. Item K is the request of Jamie Mers on behalf of Stallworth Productions LLC to film at the Stevens Estate on November ninth, twenty twenty-two, from five AM to eight PM.
So there is gonna be a movie filmed at the Stevens Estate. It is an AMC television show called Invitation to a Bonfire, and there is a project description within your packet. And they are coming before you because on one day out of all of it, November ninth, they are starting before seven AM, they're starting at five, and they're wrapping after seven PM, they're getting done at, at eight, wrapping. I feel like that's like a, very much like a movie talk. I'm ready.
Multiple meanings.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a cameo, huh?
Right? Look at me. So they have, the application's all, is all in process. They are also getting a food permit because they will have a food truck. They, looks like the application, that they're gonna be boarding up the windows, so I don't think we'll have a lot of issues with light, but there will be some, some trucks. They have notified all of the abutters. Laurie helped them with the abutter list. They'll have a police and fire detail during all of the filming.
And it will be inside the estate, not outside?
They're filming inside the estate.
I assume the fireside's on board.
Yes, they have a contractor fireside.
Just think about it, if this movie goes really, really well, that could bring.
Put some on the map.
Put some on the map, and, oh, yes, I was there and in the room where the blah, blah, blah happened, or whatever. It's really fun.
It'll be fun to see it, too.
It is. Fun when these things come across our desk. So, all right. Other questions about it? If not, I will take a motion. I have a motion and a second. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Can't wait to see the movie. I know, right? It's actually soon. I just realized. It's just a couple days back.
Yeah, it's Wednesday.
So that's great. Item L is to waive the right of first refusal for 180 Chicken Road, Unit 307C. So this is typically what we do.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll motion that we waive the right of first refusal for 180 Chicken Road, Unit 307C.
Okay, I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. We are moving into licensing, so.
I motion that we move into licensing.
I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Over to you.
We are now in licensing. This evening, we have a one-day liquor license. The application comes from Paul Galant on behalf of Merrimack College for one-day wine and malt liquor license. The event is a reception for donors and board members to view the new facility to be held in the Church of Christ The Teacher on November ninth, from five PM to nine PM. Merrimack Police will be doing the detail for this event, and there are favorable recommendations that are given by police, fire, health department, and the building inspector. Outstanding items include certificate of occupancy, so, and other than that, there are no other conditions from what I can see, unless someone can tell me if something got put on here after. So that's pretty much it. Kind of a standard-type appeal.
This is November ninth, and they don't have the certificate of occupancy yet?
I believe they may have now gotten it.
And they had a temporary.
Yeah.
Occupancy permit.
And the police department's okay with Merrimack Police doing the detail?
They understood that from the application and said they did not have any issues.
Okay.
They usually are. They usually are okay with it.
We've been working very closely together, the two departments, over the last two weeks.
Yeah.
Very well.
That's good to hear.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the request of Paul Galant on behalf of Merrimack College for a one-day wine and malt liquor license for reception at the Church of Christ on November ninth, two thousand twenty-two, from five to nine PM.
And subject to.
Certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, thank you. Subject to receipt and of the certificate of occupancy for the facility.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to move out of licensing.
Remove.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. We are now out of licensing. All right. We are, don't have any consent items, and so we'll look to the approval of minutes from the open session of October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Has everybody had a chance to look at them?
I'll move approval of the minutes from open session of October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, as written.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Now we'll move to old business, where we'll talk about the use of ARPA funds for utility assistance, which is a discussion we started a few weeks ago, so.
So, as you know, we've been kind of tossing around ways to use ARPA funds in order to assist homeowners in increased utilities that they are experiencing during this winter season. And we had gone back to do some due diligence, and we have an idea for an application that we'd like to bring forward, and just wanted to hear your thoughts. So we met with the grid, and they let us know that there are six hundred and fifty people who currently qualify for the low-income assistance. So what we're recommending is that for a three-month period, we do a hundred dollars off per bill, which would be a total of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for those six hundred and fifty people, but that we also have an application for people who don't qualify that would meet some other metric. So what we are recommending and what we're thinking about was what, the metric that we use for the rental assistance. So Laurie was just showing me that we had used the hundred percent AMI, which was one person at eighty thousand five fifty, and two people at ninety-two thousand fifty, so a higher metric than currently available. And we would cap that program at another two hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for a total of approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that way, we would be able to help almost thirteen hundred people who we know need it the most. And so we wanted to get your feedback on that idea.
Is it just based on income, or is there, you know, things for elderly, families with small children, or is there other?
So this program, the low-income program that the National Grid does, it's based mostly, if you remember correctly from the last time we talked about it, on people who qualify for state assistance. So you may have people who are on the WIC program that would qualify. You may have people who get the circuit breaker who qualify. So it kind of encompasses all different types of people, families, elderly people, et cetera. The six hundred and fifty number actually also mimics the number that we got from our broker for electricity as well. Their number was about six hundred, so it's about fifty more people than that. But we figured if we did it this way, we would be able to encompass the most people.
Can you think of any pros or cons about what we're proposing that we just need to be aware of?
Yeah, so I think the pros are that we'll be able to really. Yeah, so I think the, the pros are that, that we'll be able to really impact people who need it the most. Like, one of the things that we heard about when we first came to you and said we could give twenty-five dollars off a bill, is that's not very impactful, right?
It's a pizza, one pizza.
Yeah, exactly. But I think a hundred dollars off a bill is, is impactful, and for some people, could be almost their entire electric bill for the month. And then, if we also have the second way of doing this, we're able to really get even more people who maybe have slipped through the cracks in the past, right, who don't know that this program's available. The only downside that I see is that we, we cap it at the four fifty, and let's say, we have so many applications that we run out of money, which is what happened with the rental assistance program. But with the rental assistance program, we went back and asked for more. We could do the exact same thing here, right?
Sure.
We could ca, we could cap it at the four fifty for now, but then say to you, you know, we've had fourteen more applications come in, all of them fall within the need metric, and we'd like to see those processed, too. So, I think that even though that is a con, there is a way to overcome that. Do you see anything else?
No, and I think the concern about, you know, whether people actually need it, giving somebody something automatically if they didn't really feel like they needed it, this is another way to address that, because we're asking people to apply. So, somebody may have a really big bill, but just feel like, I can, I can do this, I can manage this, let the funds go to somebody else, so they won't apply for it, whereas somebody who might really be struggling, who doesn't meet the sixty percent AMI, would have an opportunity to apply to get some assistance.
Yeah, and Sarah just finished the postcard, so we actually could halt the postcard production until we get this passed by you, and then add this to the postcard, too, before it goes out.
Right.
Because remember, you asked us to do a postcard with all the different programs that are available? She just got us the final draft on that today.
So, how many months would this be for? So, a hundred dollars off, for how many months?
Three.
Three. That, I mean, to me, that's a great program, because that's coming at a very important, very critical time, too, during the winter, where obviously, we use lights more, we use heating more, so to get a hundred dollars off your bills, total three hundred dollars off your bill, that's pretty...
Substantial.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I, as part of the Affordable Housing Trust, I think, that was a great program that we had, and it was, you know, well-received, and obviously, we had a lot of applicants born, and I think we were able to help a lot of people, and I think this is just another way of being able to do that. And I think, again, it, it hits to the, the heart of what the ARPA funds afford, to help people directly, and I think that's really important.
The good news is, though, that so far, November's been pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
So, we got a little bit of a bonus hopefully there that will stretch those funds perhaps as well.
True.
I know, we almost needed the air conditioning yesterday.
Also expensive.
We were thinking December, January, and February, depending on the timing, the National Grid needs. It could be January, February, March.
Yes.
But all cold, all cold months, yeah.
Sometimes that March bill is hard, too.
Yeah, and I, I think what we would have to, we would work with the grid, and if the bill is not a hundred dollars, then it would be the amount of the bill.
Right, it has to be capped.
Yeah.
But they said it's fairly easy to implement for them to credit, because they have the info, so they know they have these six hundred and fifty people. That part will be easy. The other, the application probably, I think, will have to be a grant kind of thing, that we might have to pay the bill or something.
We'll figure that out, yeah.
Okay.
And then, the six hundred and fifty, are those people currently on the program, or are they, or is that all the people that they think qualify for the program?
Those are people who currently qualify.
Currently qualify.
Yes.
But are there people that haven't, there's probably people that qualify that aren't in the program, right?
There certainly could be, right, and that's why I kind of hope to...
I think that's who we're hoping to reach with that, like, you can, you can apply, and, oh, by the way, you also might qualify, so we'll help you, but...
Right.
Maybe you'll actually realize you can get more help.
And the postcards, are they going to go to everybody, or...
The plan is to send the postcard to everyone.
This is great. Thank you. I, I agree. This is totally what the money's for.
Will those six fifty get something separate that tells them that this is happening?
So, we'll have to ask the National Grid if they can note it on the bill somehow?
Yeah.
Or maybe they can even do...
It would just be a nice surprise regardless, but...
Right, right.
It would be nice for them to know that this is how we are choosing, you know, that we're spending ARPA, like...
And they do want, they mentioned about, you know, trying to reach other people who actually aren't on their list of low income, because they don't know about it, and perhaps...
Yes.
Somehow being able to get the free and reduced lunch people, you know, to, the information to them, so that they, because they may not know that it's available, so...
Turned home.
That would be great.
Do we cross lists with the schools?
Not yet, but we can.
Yeah, we, we're trying to figure out how to do that, because I'm not sure we...
We don't think we'll get the actual list?
We can't get the list, yes.
So, they may have to...
Yeah.
So, but this is all in the works. So, what we'll do is, we'll do an application for your next meeting.
Okay.
And then we can vote then.
Town manager, I think I mentioned this at our last meeting, or one prior to that, I can't remember. Is there any way we can work with National Grid on energy-saving ways? Like, you know, that sometimes they'll tell you, well, if you're leaving the house, turn your heat way down, and then sometimes, some people will say no, because it costs more when you try to heat it back up. But it would be great to know what tips that will help all of us, that maybe we could post, or see if they'd be willing to put a sheet of tips in their billing or whatever.
Sure, I think that makes perfect sense. And I think also, off of that, another really important point is that if you apply for the, the assistance through the Greater Lawrence Community Action Council, did I get that right?
Mm-hmm.
Community Action Council, you actually qualify for assistance in helping to weatherproof your house, too. So, and, you know, something that maybe some of us don't realize, is something as easy as putting like a new frame on your door, right, can be a great cost savings. So, I think that's another great program people don't know about.
I think that would be great, and I think that, that helps everybody, not just the people with financial need, but, you know, I think everyone's feeling the pinch, so even helping just everybody. And, and again, sometimes the, the recommendations you hear are kind of conflicting, like they say, no, you should just keep it on one set temperature, and then you'll hear, no, if you're leaving, turn it down. So, you don't, but then you also have to caution people, being in my business, that they don't turn it down so much, and their sink is on an outside wall, that you could have frozen pipes, and that could be disastrous for people with financial concerns.
Maybe we could get Steve Foster to film something for Cam, talking about different things you could do for the, your house, and...
That would be cool.
That would be great for him to do that, and then also put a, again, put a sheet out that they can take and look at.
National Grid actually does have a website out there.
Yes, I think we did talk, I think you mentioned that at the last meeting.
And they also are, you know, they're talking about doing the energy assessment, too, and you can receive power strips, low-flow showerheads, faucet aerators, and programmable thermostats, which I did this a couple of years ago after the National, after the Columbia Gas, and they came out and did all that, and they installed all of the setback thermostats, and the low-flow showerheads, and insulation in the attic, at a discounted price, and they did a, you know, sealed all the doors up, so it really is a good program, and it's, it's very little cost, if any, cost to the homeowner, so definitely should take advantage of it.
Yeah, Sarah sent that information out last week, or the week before, just the National Grid flyer. They sent us a flyer after we had our meeting with them, and I think she did send that information out.
Maybe we can print some and put them on the C E centers, too.
Yeah. Or we could, like, when we have the application for people, maybe just have a link next to it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Next item is our town manager's report.
Oh, just a couple of things. Tomorrow's election day, so don't forget about that.
Gee, forget?
For the Fields Master Plan, we did have a public meeting this week, last week, and if you missed it, the slides have been shared on our website and social media, and Laurie is collecting any additional comments that may come in. And just so the public knows, we are currently auctioning our vehicle, our vehicles on Unibid, and we have a little friendly competition going on with the police department to see how much we can get for them. So, we have a Dodge Charger on there right now, and last time I checked, it was already at one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
I know.
So, keep your eye on Unibid, because we are doing all of our vehicles through there now. Exciting.
Cool.
Mm-hmm.
I know this is your favorite topic, and I don't want to jinx it, because they were there early last week. Trash.
Yes, I was going to ask the same thing, and you could, because we've had a few discussions today about some issues, but go ahead.
I would say, it has improved by about eighty-five percent, I think. We did, there was some days last week, I know, I don't want to jinx that, I'm very interested about it. There was some days last week where we got, I had two hundred emails and calls that I was returning about trash, and now I'm down to maybe fifteen, twenty, so I feel like it's much better. We did use town staff to come in over the weekend and grab as many leaf bags as possible, just because we know they're already overwhelmed, so whatever we can do to try to keep things moving and comfortable. If you are still running into issues, or your trash has not been picked up, please put a reported in, or email me directly, and we're getting them all over to, to the company. As you know, it's just, I think, some growing pains as we transition through the merger, but having spoken to a few other communities, they are also seeing vast improvement. So, I'm feeling optimistic about the trash.
And the leaves?
Yeah, the leaves. We'll, they'll, yep, and we'll be picking up the leaves as well. And I know it's windy and very frustrating. I, I swear that I was raking leaves this weekend, and I turned around, and they were just falling down twice as fast behind me. But they will be coming to get the leaves as well. You know, we, we did do it over the weekend to try to get as many as we can, and we'll keep on it.
Can you just, and again, we talked about this earlier, is just make sure that some of the streets, one, three weeks, and another one, I believe, was a couple weeks, that we, it can't be three weeks. They cannot.
No, so those were all sent in. I don't think, I don't think I was aware that there was any that were outstanding for that long, but Wiley Court and Green Street have, are on the list for this week. You know, today, sent over was Wiley, Cobblestone, Green.
I didn't call on Green. That wasn't me.
Yeah, well, no, lots of people called, don't worry.
I lived there, that's...
One property on Mass Ave, and then Two Strange Situations, where there was one barrel left behind on Liberty Street, but the other barrel was taken, and that happened again at a house on Green Street. But those are the ones that we kind of were dealing with today. They were sent over at one eighteen P.M., and they've been, I would say, responsive. So, we're, we're working on it.
One, one question I have. Are there new rules about leaving bags on Saturday? Because I noticed that, like, the house across from me, they had barrels out, but they also had a green trash bag, and the green trash bag didn't get picked up. And then I saw that's another situation like that somewhere else. So, that's not a change in rules?
There's no change, then anything you can put out, except you cannot put out mattresses or textiles.
Okay.
So, for instance, that bag may, had textiles in it, they may not have taken it because it was closed. We're no longer allowed to pick up textiles or mattresses, as you all know. But other than that, no, there's no new rules about how you need to put your trash out.
Okay.
Nothing has changed, except who's picking it up.
Okay. And the guidance for mattresses now, or to go bring directly to TBI?
Uh, yep, so you can call, and they actually will come and get it.
Oh, TBI will come and get it?
Yeah, it's, we're using, it's, it's not actually TBI, it's a company out of Lawrence, they're a nonprofit. They actually strip the entire mattress and then recycle it.
So, what do they charge for picking up?
And I believe it's forty dollars. Let me come that up.
And TBI is a hundred dollars if you bring it to TBI, I think. If you bring it there, I think it's...
It's a hundred dollars at TBI?
I think so, yeah.
So, forty dollars. We have a contract with them, that's the price we've locked in for the community. I believe all of our surrounding communities are also using them, and they come in, they basically strip the entire thing by hand.
Okay. And is that information, is that going to go out? Because I can see these mattresses ending up on the side of the road.
I'm already seeing them ending up on the side of the road.
I saw them coming out of TBI, I saw them, you know, they must have said, oh, a hundred dollars to get, and then on the way out, they toss them out.
I know, this is a tough mandate. So, we did share it. We were going to do a robocall last week, and then I made an executive decision, and we sent the robocall out about the trash not getting picked up instead, and what people should do, and where they should call. So, the robocall about the mattresses and the textiles is going to be going out this week.
Okay, great.
And we will reiterate that again.
There's a learning curve, for sure, but we'll just, we'll get there.
We will, we will, and we are prepared to pick up the ones that we need to for now, but eventually, we may, if we start seeing trash accumulation and things we can't pick up, we may have to implement ticketing or something else in order to offset the fees, so.
Makes sense.
Well, the movie set needs a big bonfire.
Right?
Just...
Mattress, yep. So, we'll move on to updates from the Select Board. Anybody?
Just, um, happy, well, I mean, not happy, but, you know, let's get out there for Veterans' Day and honor the veterans, and, you know, come out to the ceremony. It's usually always a very well-done ceremony, so I hope everyone comes out on Friday morning and salutes our veterans.
We'll see you on Friday.
We still have more opportunities to buy some wreaths for getting there, but we still have some available, so if anybody's interested, they are ninety dollars, and happy.
That's not my checkbook. I'll get to you on Friday.
That's okay.
That's great.
So, just, please feel free to call me or look it up. I think we're going to send